So I'd like to call the work session of the workshop of the College Place City Council meeting to order. As it is a workshop, no public testimony will be taken and no decisions will be made this evening. If we could please stand for our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So a moment of silence as we reflect on our work to do this evening. Thank you all very much. I'd like to excuse both Ms. Nyhagen and Mr. Bobbitt this evening. Mr. Rosatello, memorandum of understanding with property owners for Southwest trunk line.
Okay, thank you Mayor. So this item basically goes over a general understanding on the engineering side of plans with the Southwest trunk wastewater sewer. I wanted an agreement with the property owner so we didn't get into this and end up in a situation. So that's basically what that encompasses. Lisa, if you could click on the app because I just want to provide an overview of where the trunk line covers. No, who is it? Yeah. I don't know who was in the next. Oh. Yeah. Okay, yes. No good point. So this just goes over the whole area that the trunk line would cover. I suppose from Commercial Drive, Country Estates area, Nap Edition, Harvest Meadows, Meadow Brook area, and then McHirman Christianson property. So what this MOU says is that basically a city will pay for the engineering of the line and acquisition of some property that would be outside of Mike and Craig's property, basically on the edge here. So that way we can consolidate lift stations and build a big lift station to serve the whole area. Whatever the engineering plans come out with, they would need to give the right of way free of charge naturally. And then this also memorializes the fact that whatever program, the lift station assessment, connection charges, whatever comes of this, the future development needs to pay that. There can't be any contest in anything. What this also says is that the construction phase of this project will be a second MOU because there's a couple of ways that this project can go down. Either the city could construct it and then get paid back on the program, the lift station assessment and connection charges and all that. But in the long run, it's going to be a lot more expensive for everyone involved just because of prevailing wage and other requirements that the city has to do. Or since this is a larger scale development, if Mike and Craig find a developer and let's say that developer builds said line with the engineering, then there may be ways we could sweeten the pot such as special connection fees or some other thing because it'll cost a lot less for everyone. They are in talks with some developers right now to sell off pieces of that. That's why this is written in an open-ended fashion where it just covers engineering. We'll come back to the table on the construction phase and then we'll negotiate a second MOU to govern that. Engineering is expected to probably take about a year on this till the end of the year. And yeah, this will just cover engineering and all that good stuff if you go to the end of this. Okay, the other ones, I think I had the other signature, but it's taken care of. Mike and Craig, they both signed it because I want to make sure that there was a general understanding, whatever development happens, they're subject to all fees and stuff and then we get the right of way. And then it also was run through the Economic Development Commission, so they gave their recommendation last night on this. So ultimately, that's what this agreement is. So this will be coming before you if you're agreeable to or you like how it's fashioned by next meeting. So that way we can just keep moving forward. I just want to make sure it was all written so there wasn't any background noise when this gets further in.
I don't want to get held up with anything.
Yeah.
Questions for Mr. Rosatello.
Who just reviewed this? The economic?
Economic Development Commission last night. Yeah.
Thank you for continuing to look out for us.
Lieutenant, I'm sorry.
I said, "Thank you for continuing to look out for us."
Well, yeah, there was some interesting conversation prior to this that really necessitated.
There's some, we won't go into, but there is some very fascinating back and forth where to protect everyone, we needed to do this.
Were there any comments or concerns from the Economic Development Group last night?
No, because they see this is really the main future growth of the city and the fact that we needed to provide the capacity for stuff that's already built. It really puts us in a situation in the future if we don't do it. Because basically Commercial Drive and then even the full build out of the stuff behind Meadow Brook Plaza is really in jeopardy if we don't because capacity is a bit of an issue on the south side.
Do we know yet about being able to cross the highway? If we're going to be able to stick a line in while they're working on it or?
We are having negotiations on that and it's going to be brought up by Go Wasdatt headquarters next week because they haven't been moving as quick as we would like them to. And I drove the point home with the emergency resolution that, you know, move it. So we'll have that conversation next Wednesday.
Good.
We can always bore underneath it, but it'll be, sure be a lot better to.
Yeah.
I know we can, but I would like to spend my money on happier things.
Yeah.
Although it'd make a great field trip.
A little bit of an aside, I was just curious, like, how are they determining, or how are we determining, I guess, the zoning for those areas? I know we kind of want commercial up front. I mean, is, in terms of development, is that primarily, I guess, requested by the developers? How they want to arrange it, the sizes and whatnot or?
Well, in the comp plan process, we established those zones. There is a little bit of flexibility because they, that front parcel, it's one or two parcels. So we kind of drew just, I would say, kind of fuzzy lines there, open to interpretation of where the actual zone wound up being. So there's some flexibility there, but essentially that, if we could pull up maybe the map. Can I have that pointer? So this, I guess there's two pieces right here. Those two both, they're, you know, commercial was more identified on this strip out in front and then multifamily back here. But it, there's some interplay that can take place amongst those two. And then the upper portion, I think, was established as residential. And I think that we identified a small corner as commercial. So we're still working on updating the development standards and so we don't really know what the multifamily section will look like, but we'll, I mean, it's not going to be much different than what we have right now. We could end up with a mixed-use product as well. So some of that may shake out when they make their proposals and we work through a hearing examiner decision.
And that's, the comp plan is guiding that, those decisions?
Right. Thank you.
Sort of related question, but Mike, you know, I'm hearing anecdotally that there's a real lack of home building sites right now in the valley. You know, I keep, I hear some of this buzz and I don't know if it's, you know, it looks like it's factual and that, but is that, you hearing that also or?
Well, I would say the answer is because this county, because so much of the land was deemed that sensitive ag, the urban growth areas relative to a lot of other areas of the state are just really tight around here. And that means it lands at premium, which drives up the cost to go buy a home. And there just isn't that much available. And then the county doesn't really facilitate the quick process to actually make the needed amendments, so.
I don't want to start talking about those 100-acre sections, but they can be broken down into two-acre, but then not around the wheat fields. I keep, but yeah, you have to have water rights and so all of that, right, has kind of constricted this land usage, to your point.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, I keep hearing that and no one necessarily wants to buy a two-acre minimum. So spots like this, I guess my point is when they're developed are kind of at a premium, I guess, and obviously.
Part of, part of the problem with developable land in the urban growth areas, at the initiation of the Growth Management Act, the county allowed, county allowed some relatively small plots around the periphery of the communities. And with that, that means that there's, that you either get very small-scale development if it was brought in, or a developer has to, has to go out and buy, try and buy a whole bunch of lots together to put together something to make it economical to develop. So.
It's pretty amazing that, my husband and I bought in the East Gate area. It's amazing how many houses are going up in the little plots all around in the neighborhoods. They're just building them nonstop. They're doing it super high.
When they do that, those little small plots are much more expensive to develop than it is to do a large-scale development.
Yeah.
Because there's no, there's no economy of scale. You gotta, you gotta have crews scattered all over. It just, this is one of, that, you know, 200 acres is one of the few, few areas that's, that's really easily developable as compared to what else is out in urban growth areas.
And I would just add with that trunk line too, that should the county ever approve our urban growth expansion, cuppers bridge, that trunk line's needed to serve that area too. So really, for most of our future growth at all, regardless, it involves the trunk line. That's the only way to do it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're all, this all. Heading, heading west of College Place, you have the airport, and I think I've had this conversation before with somebody here, but to develop that direction, of course, there's an issue with sewer infrastructure and all that. But is it a case that how that area is zoned there is, is it not a bottleneck or is it a bottleneck for any future west development down the Last Chance Road from College Place? Or is that an accurate assessment?
Yeah, I mean, relative to any other areas you could develop, but in my opinion, it'd be a mess because you really only have one arterial out there, Whitman Drive. So no matter what you're doing out there, you'd be routing all the traffic right through the middle of the university, right by all the schools and everything else. And then also not in the current comprehensive plan, but in the past comprehensive plan, well, I guess it's still out there since we pulled the application. But that martineer field, that had that future land use designation of industrial on that. So if you were to do industrial out there, I'd find that fascinating because you basically have incongruent use of a pretty dense residential neighborhood next door. Plus, there's a high water table out there. So in general, it's, it's just a mess to develop out there.
The, one of our, you know, one of the discussion points was, it can be developed, there's lots of open land out there, but getting through the city, there's, right now, there's only one way to do that.
Do you cost to add more gap revenue?
Well, I said, I don't see, there's no easy, there's no easy way of putting another arterial out there without, without doing some, something around, bringing something around through a little in that way. But then it just.
Yeah. Well, I mean, you can do anything with money out there, but the return on investment, actually, if you crunch numbers, I don't even think the ROI on that would be out there to build anything. By the time you run through a hearing examiner, you basically have to widen and improve Whitman all the way back into the city, plus deal with uproar on that, and then deal with stormwater. And even though there's a tiny bit of capacity left on the utility systems, there's not enough to go develop all a martineer field. So just the amount of money you'd have to pump into that's ridiculous.
It's just, anyway.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, guys.
Any other questions for Mr. Rosatello? Strategic plan review.
Thank you, Mayor. So every year, we just try to look at the strategic plan and see what's working and what isn't. We went over a session with department heads and Lawson Knight, who put together the original strategic plan. He did this as a pro bono effort, so thanks to him for that. But really, we've been sticking to the strategic plan pretty well. And some items are actually done ahead of schedule, like the LED lights are being converted. That was about three years out in the original strategic plan and we're in the tail end to completing that. So that is good. But one item is like the big box store we originally had, that there'd be a sign commitment this year. And that's really contingent on that trunk line, so that's going to be pushed about a year out. But I think we'll be able to meet that. Also, the identity of the city as far as putting a picture represents the whole city. So in the strategic plan, we put a picture of the movies at the park event. Beyond that, though, he wrote a little memo that encapsulated everything and that's there. And a lot of it, we're moving along. The mission values are all tied in between various plans and a strategic plan. As you've all witnessed, as we do budget in year to year, that's getting easier now because of replacement funds are finally starting to amass where every year it is in a major situation. Also, our partners are looking at us differently because they see a lot of what we're doing. The summit issues, though, is like with the ambulance service. There, we're getting quite a few calls for service, more than anticipated. So like, for instance, December of 2018, there's a forecast of 10 transports and there ended up actually being 42 transports. And then this weekend, I met with John Booth and there were about four or five times where they had double stacked calls. And luckily, they had enough, we have the two ambulances, enough volunteers, but yeah, there's quite a bit of need out there. So longer term, we may need to look at that.
Did that change countywide? I mean, that wasn't just the College Place.
I have, as far as countywide, I mean, that December statistic, the numbers did go up. So you're correct, that's a trend countywide. As far as my anecdote about this weekend, though, I can attest to that because when I met with John yesterday, he just told me that one. But nonetheless, it exists. Other things to consider in this is that parking recreation pilot. So that was successful. How we build upon this effort, there'll be a study that goes to this body that our Whitman fellow is completing and how we can structure recreation program in the future. United Way and Campfire, they're, we're going to be issuing a flyer soon on that, but we'll have a summer lawn camp this year and it'll actually be a summer-wide activity. Also, the infamous library services issue, where does that go? And then also organizational structure, Public Works, because Paul's been here for my years and he will retire at some point, what does that end up looking like? And basically, things like that. And then also bringing out staff. And then the identity of the city, we've started to try to get that wayfinding and other things, but that's an element in transition. So we've been sticking along really well with the strategic plan. It's just other things that have come in forefront as time goes on.
Which goes back to the old military planning adage of no plan will stay in first contact with the enemy.
It's always exciting to think back to the survey that we did, I guess, just over a year ago. And to see the things that we've done from that and to see the reception from College Place and beyond. So that's been really cool. When people ask me how I like working on council, I'm like, are you kidding? It's so exciting. Like, I love the stuff that we're doing and it's, it's, yeah, huge sense of pride for what you all are doing and love it.
And one thing I'll mention with the recreation program, I'm going to be working with Camp Firing, everyone, make sure we fill in the gaps. But I received notice today that that camp program, that Valley Camps has been rung, that was rung for a number of years out Village Church, that that's ended this year. So there will be a little bit of a gap because of that. So we'll make sure that we provide the proper response there so there isn't too big of a gap.
Great.
Should mention on, on the library services, we're meeting with Rhonda Gold this Friday to talk about a vote to incorporate into the library district or not.
I thought you were meeting with her this December.
We did. And we're meeting again this Friday and we'll, we'll continue to move forward. I've talked with their board. Their board's willing to, to move forward on this. We'll just see where it goes.
Billing for the ambulance, how's that proceeding for services? Are there, is there a timeline for that?
Well, as far as billing for ambulance, we have that third-party provider that we've been working on for that. So that has been moving along at a good pace where we're starting to get some reimbursements that way. But it's just starting, so we're going to really have to pay attention to the trend line. What is the gap between what we're giving back from everyone versus what we're pulling in? And really, this is a year, I would say, of learning on that front. And then we'll see what it takes really longer term on the ambulance. At the same time that's going on, we'll be on the discussions about that regional fire authority too and weighing the frozen cards of that as well.
You know, Mike, I may have a, you know, maybe I'm too optimistic about that, but you know, we looked at the structure of the ambulance service and then we looked at what it would take to expand it to another vehicle, another more staff or whatever. You know, the interesting thing with that receipts are, to see, that is a revenue stream we did not have before, that we have now, and how does that interplay with keeping it, maybe even a point of net neutral, I guess, of sort. Quite importantly, still adding maybe some staff or, you know, whatever. I may be, like I said, a very optimistic, but yeah, I look forward to seeing what that, what the net looks like in six months or.
Yeah, I mean, but I'd say by a six-month time period, we'll know ultimately how this is working itself out. The one thing I will note, though, just because I've heard some comments to the effect, in the future, like, for instance, if nursing homes or certain uses are consuming more of the services than most other areas, in order to collect anything from anyone, you have to implement that utility fee to do that. Now, you can tweak what type of use pays what. We've already done this study, so that's a good, that's good because per RCW, you need that regardless. But I just want to mention, it's not like we can just go to nursing homes and be like, hey, you're unfair, go give us money. Once you start charging above like what you pull in from your property tax, you end up having to do some sort of a system-wide charge to everyone.
Hence, hence the city of Walla Walla.
Bingo, yeah.
Oh, good point.
So can't we just pay for service?
Well, it is, it could, it could be a little bit of pay for service, but like, for instance, there's this revenue model where you, where you can actually make the ambulance service really support itself. It's called, and I don't even know what the abbreviation's for, so Harvey, excuse me on that one, but the GEMT, that's a way of getting additional money from State Department of Health and other people to fund the ambulance. But in order to do that, it's actually in the RCW, you need to be doing that utility charge of some sort. Now, you can tweak the utility charge and deviate it for uses from the utility stubby, but regardless, there needs to be a charge of some sort.
The issue, the, one of the issues around ambulance fees is, and even the ambulance utility is, especially for high users like long-term care and nursing facilities, is that essentially Medicaid beds are not billable. And they bill those other things, what the, what the, the principle behind GEMT is, is that it allows, it allows the state to offset costs if you're, if you're delivering services to a lot of Medicaid patients. Because even, no matter what, both Medicare and Medicaid do not cover the cost of ambulance runs.
So did Walla Walla start that utility in January 1?
Not yet. Not yet. They're proposing it.
Because we own another house in Walla Walla, so I have no idea what my bills are on my current, the house we live in. But the other house, I noticed, January was about, there were some new charges, about 50 bucks more.
Yeah, well, it's, their proposed ambulance, their proposed ambulance utility is about 350 a month.
Oh, okay, yeah. I'm not sure what, I couldn't understand what was in there.
Yeah.
From household?
What?
$350 a month.
No, $3.50.
Oh, I was like, great, just write a check.
Everything is gold-plated with diamond encrusted.
They know your name in the ambulance.
I want chocolate-covered strawberries in that everyone.
Well, that seems very reasonable.
About standard, actually.
Oh, but you, you know, they'll, they'll be accused of taking their firstborn.
Yeah.
And, and, and so it's, you know, no matter what, it's going to be controversial.
Yeah.
But it is, fire departments have been uniquely successful at their work. And, and what's, what was, what was a service that helped prevent and control house fires is now turned into an emergency medical service with a sideline of, of fire prevention. And the model that we use in the United States is incredibly expensive.
It was like for patients.
Yeah.
So.
And the, I, one sideline that, the, the, part of, part of Chief Winter's worry is, is burning out our volunteers on the ambulances. They're very busy and, you know, with the constant changeover in volunteers. And he's down, he has, he's down one captain and the other one may be getting close to retiring. It doesn't look like, you know, there's not a lot of those seasoned, long-term volunteers that can take over that, that role. So we have, there'll be some interesting times ahead for fire services. Any other questions for Mr. Rosatello? So we sent out a proposed committee assignments for this year. Mr. Peterson has, has more committees than any other. You're up to, you're up to five committees. We, I'd like to balance that out a little more. If you have any preference for what you'd not like to do, or if anybody, if you take.
Well, oh, go ahead.
If you take a look at the committee assignments and want to move around, let me know and I will bring that forward to you at a later date this year or two.
I have a question. How much work is it? I'm looking at these things, and I used to be on like, on more, but it was internal ones that met once a year. And I understand that that probably isn't happening because this guy is like really busy. But I'm talking about Mike. Okay. But I'm wondering, would it behoove us to take a look at how much time goes into each of these things? Because like, maybe it is a committee that meets once a year or, right, or a budget thing. I mean, I don't know how often the VMAC meets for, you know, I'm just wondering, it's one thing to be listed and say that we're on six, but if we're meeting for a half an hour every 12 months, maybe that's not the same weight. You know, I mean, I just want to make sure that the time is evenly spread, not necessarily the number. Does that make sense?
Yeah, the difficulty is most of our internal committees are ad hoc.
Right. But I mean, we have probably documents somewhere that should. Right, but I mean, we have probably documents somewhere that show what we have done.
It'd take more time to...
Okay.
To do that than it's worth, most of them. The, the busiest committees are going to be Public Works and Finance.
Right.
And, and that's been, we tried to structure those. Fin- Finance, if we go to a two-year budget cycle, Finance will be a little less frequent. Public Works is probably the busiest of those.
Yeah, it's a good example, because like, the Mountain Action Council, I really enjoy that. It's, we may go, like, on the finance with the Mountain Action Council, too. We're, boy, that's two, three hours, so we, you know, excuse me. And beyond that, when you go to fundraisers, you're, yeah, so sometimes that can be four or five hours or more. The leoff is like, two times a year, 20 minutes each, you know?
Yeah.
Right.
There's things like that, and if somebody wants to do that one, you know, I, or, you know, like, no, I'm helping out of Mayor, I'm willing to, uh, whatever, yeah.
Okay, I just...
I'm, I'm open to your suggestions, you know?
Okay, well, I'll, we'll, we'll fiddle with the numbers and...
Yeah.
And go from there. The, the internal committees are, are so difficult to determine, how, how busy is it gonna be?
Right.
If we have a real crisis with Public Works, that, that can tie up a lot of time. Hopefully, we won't, the Finance Committee is a couple meetings, a couple hours long in the fall, but, with that, if there's, just let me know if there's any, if you have any wishes, uh...
In, in general or related to this?
Related to this, and, and, yeah, wishes in general.
One thing I will mention...
You can wish in one hand.
The, the one thing I will mention, just 'cause I don't think it was ever mentioned before, you'll probably hear about it, it's the, yeah, council on housing, so, uh, Mayor appointed me to be on there, but what that is, is they're trying to basically do a regional response to the affordable housing crisis, but then also homelessness and other things, so they're trying to do like a committee of committees, where a lot of the, you know, hack county and random committees meet with this committee and then try to come up with something, so that just got constituted, uh, in the last month, so, if you hear about that's what that is.
The Regional Bicycle Committee, I'm not even sure that that is actually a committee. I've never been to one of those meetings.
Neither have I, I'm currently on it, but...
There is a, the city of Walla Walla has a bicycle and pedestrian committee, or it's called Walla Walla Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and I'm not sure if that's, if that's something that is a Walla Walla thing, or...
It's a Walla Walla, the city of Walla Walla thing.
So...
You guys just haven't been invited to the meeting?
Well, I don't think those are two of the same thing.
No, those aren't...
So anyhow, I don't, we need to look into that a little bit further and see if there's actually a, a regional committee that we can attend.
What? What did you say?
I'm just curious if there is a, a regional committee that we could attend. I'm sure as a citizen of Walla Walla, I could go to that meeting and participate, but not really is it...
I'll ask at the, there should, it's, if anybody knows, it'll be at the MPO, and I'll...
Yeah.
Check with them, since I'm there on Wednesday.
Tomorrow.
And with that, we have an executive session.
Wait, no, you're supposed to remind us about our meeting. On the agenda.
Just, I'm sitting far enough away, I can't reach out. Do, do, it, does anybody need to, to, for me to speak what, in there with that? Just...
Do I need to be here for this executive session?
No.
No. No, I think Robert is doing better, so...
Have a good night.
You guys probably are talking at me, so I...
So, I, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta read my steel here to keep things legal, so Reed won't haul me off to the Hoosgow.
You know, one of the, one of the best advice, uh, pieces of advice I got was to read the professional ethics rules one, at least once a year. And that, I do it, I think I'm better at than that, but I still do it, so it's always a good reminder. I thank Lisa.
So, we're going, uh, we're going to go into an executive se- session to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions, or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the, oh, I lost it here, okay, hold on. To which the agency, the governing body or member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party with public knowledge regarding discussions likely to result in adverse legal or financial quant consequences to the agency RCW 4230.1, and I'm told this will take about five minutes. So, it is 6:08.
6:08.
6:23, we're going to go out of executive session. Any other business of this council?
Just note that no decision was made while we were in executive session.
Yeah. No decisions were made, no actions taken. There's no other business, the only, the only thing, it, the question, the question that's come up, uh, do you wanna continue having snacks at the, uh, the workshops or no?
Yes, please.
I appreciate snacks.
Fine, no.
Okay, well, that, that answers that question, Lisa?
My turkey's an odd time.
Yeah, yeah.
I got, I got, uh, but, I'm just, I'm just talking about food right now.
Important considerations.